At this time, I'll call the August Monthly Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And at this time, we'll have our invocation by Commissioner Langley and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Evans. Stand.
Let us pray. Turn about our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time. God, we thank you for your grace, for your mercy. God, we thank you for allowing us to assemble here one more time. And Father, now we ask for your understanding and guidance through your precious Holy Spirit, that we will make wise and prudent decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask at this time if you will make sure that you've silenced your cell phone. Is there any Commissioner that needs to disclose a complaint that relates to any of the agenda items tonight? Now being done, we'll move into the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Got a motion?
Yes.
And a second? All those in favor of approving the agenda, raise your right hand. Thank you. Tonight, we have two different public hearing, and so need a motion to go into the first public hearing at this time.
So move.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor of moving into the public hearing, raise your right hand. All right. At this time, I'll recognize Jamie Heath with the Mideast Commission. Jamie?
The first public hearing is a proposed text amendment to the Beaufort County subdivision ordinance. This text amendment is proposed to clarify the requirement to upgrade nonconforming easements to 50 feet in width when a subdivision occurs. The amendment would read 404.2, easements, section A. Existing easements recorded on or before the adoption of this ordinance shall be considered nonconforming and are not required to meet the requirements of this ordinance. However, when a subdivision occurs adjacent to an existing easement, if the easement serves the subdivision, the portion or entirety of the easement which serves the subdivision shall no longer be considered nonconforming and must meet the requirements of this ordinance. 404.2, easements, section D, would read, private road easement shall be a minimum of 50 feet in width and shall be recorded with the lots. When a subdivision occurs adjacent to an existing nonconforming easement, if the easement serves the subdivision, the portion or entirety of the easement which serves the subdivision must be upgraded to meet this standard. This would require providing a 25-foot easement if the subdivision only occurs on one side of the private road, or a 50-foot easement if the subdivision occurs on both sides of the private road. 401, 404.1, lots, section B9, would read, when a special subdivision occurs adjacent to a nonconforming access easement, if the access easement serves the special subdivision, the portion or entirety of the access easement which serves the special subdivision shall no longer be considered nonconforming and must meet the requirements of this ordinance.
Any comments from Commissioners? Do we have any public citizen that would like to speak at this time?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Got a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second? Second? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your right hand. Okay, we'll move into, or ask for a motion to go into, the second public hearing tonight.
So move.
Motion to move into the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Jamie? Turning back over to you.
The second public hearing is a petition to name a private road. This is an existing easement off of Keaton Road and Thorpe Lane in the Chalkawinity Township. That is approximately 450 feet in length. The property which contains the easement is 100th Thorpe Lane, owned by applicant Anthony
Do we have anyone here in the public to address? Any comments, questions by Commissioners? If not, entertain a motion to...
I might ask a question. Did she say the name of the road?
Okay.
There were three names proposed by the applicant, with the first being Aiden Lane, the second being Marie Lane, and the third being Pearl Lane.
Thank you. Take a motion, or did I get a motion?
So move.
Motion and a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of coming out of the public hearing, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're down for items for presentation, and our first one tonight is... is the Boys and Girls Club Youth Voice Experience. Mr. Best.
Good evening, distinguished guests, Commissioners, family, and community. My name is J.B. Best. I am the current Youth of the Month at the Washington Unit Boys and Girls Club, Dakota Lane. We are located at a perfect spot, 1089 North Bridge Street. We feel free, oh, sorry, sorry. Thanks, thanks to the community and local business on remapping our club, and we have more members than we ever had. Unfortunately, the kids and teens do not feel safe when arriving or leaving the Boys and Girls Club due to the speed of the cars that often pass the club and school buses. Thanks in advance for what y'all would do to help our club feel safe when arriving and leaving the club. I did not write this poem, but I would like to share it with y'all today. The calm of the valley, the peace that abundance, the heartwarming friendship of neighborly towns, the home and the firesides, and friendships that please the schools and the churches. Thank God for all of these. And that will be it, and I thank y'all for listening to me, and I hope my voice can be of impact today.
Thank you very much. And we look forward to having breakfast with you in Hickory at the State Association meeting. That's always one of our highlights.
That's right.
All right. Item number two is the proposed safety improvements on US 264 near Lizard Slip. Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Commissioner. The Department Safety and Mobility Unit has identified a potential safety improvement project on the US 264 corridor at SR 1522, that's Lizard Slip Route. The project is a super street design, and it would link the existing super street at Asbury Church Road with the new super street design at Beaufort Community College. In order for the department to move forward and seek funding, we would need the support of the Board of Commissioners. So I'm here this evening to request a letter of support for the proposed safety project.
Any questions?
Yeah. Can you explain to me a little bit how that's going to work as far as coming out of Lizard Slip?
Just go on.
And connecting Asbury Church?
It will, it will limit the left-hand movement coming out of Lizard Slip. You'll force you to turn right, go up, make a U-turn, and go eastbound.
Okay.
And the reason, the reason for that is that our Safety and Mobility Unit, they did a crash analysis, and I think from 2013 to 2018, there's been 36 accidents at that location and two fatalities.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six accidents, two fatalities.
In 2018?
From 2013 until 2018, about a five-year period.
Anyone else have a question of Mr. Taylor? Entertain the motion to...
So move.
Second.
Motion is made and second. All those in favor?
Washington.
Yes.
Have the residents been notified of this action?
This is still, this is a safety...
I mean, I mean, but do the residents, that's going to be affected? Have they been, I know it's safety, and we are for safety, but have the residents been notified of what's going to happen?
They have not yet, because in order to move forward and seek funding, we need the letter of support. This is all in the very, very early stages.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, that the people that's going to be affected just understand what, what we're doing. I don't mind. I mean, I must believe in safety at all, at any cost. I also believe in notifying people what's about to be happening. Maybe it's going to affect somebody's driveway, maybe it's going to affect somebody's business, and I, I mean, that's the only concern that I...
Once we vote, secure funding, we would notify everyone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've got one more thing, Mr. Taylor. We voted on something, I don't know, six, eight, 10 months ago, about a turnaround Douglas Crossroads. I mean, these two are not related, but you know how far the DOT has got on that, because we did support the turnaround?
I do know it's in the design phase, and I believe a proposed lead date is July 2019.
Okay, we have, have a motion and a second to do a letter of support. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. Item number three is the Golden Leaf Foundation Community Based Grants. Martin?
Evening Commissioners. This evening, I'm going to be speaking to you about the Golden Leaf Foundation Community Based Grant Making Initiative for the Northeast Prosperity Zone. This just came out in July from Dan Gillis. And the grants program is in the areas of agriculture, economic development, infrastructure, education, workforce development, and healthcare. And there's $11.5 million for 17 counties, and up to $1.5 million per county. The prosperity zone is shown in this map here. I think you probably all are aware of where it's located, basically to our north of us. So tomorrow, actually, there is, today, and actually, we're going to the one tomorrow, there are introductory information sessions. So this, again, is very preliminary at this point, although there has been a lot of activity trying to have people think in a regional manner. Then letters of inquiry are due September 7th. Applications are due November 9th, and then February, the grants will be awarded. As I said, grants per county will be about $1.5 million, and you can have one to three projects per county. There may be a match up to 20%, but likely that will be in-kind services, but it will help in the competitiveness of the, of the grant. And they say not all counties will receive funding for all projects for that matter. Each county will have a liaison, and that will be the county manager to put forward the slate of projects for particular counties. As I said, all, all the counties can put in an application, but not necessarily all of them will receive it, and regional projects will receive preference. And that's what a lot of our training has been over the last couple of months, trying to have us think in a regional manner. Right now, we have, coming out of all that regional thinking, we have three projects that are potentially slated for Beaufort County. One is the Science Engineering and Agricultural Academy. ECU has a project that wants to involve us in terms of microbusinesses. And then there's a regional approach from Beaufort, Martin, and Pitt County about workforce, particularly manufacturing workforce development. So in terms of the Science Engineering Agricultural Academy, we have some guests here from Beaufort County Schools. Mark Doan, who's the interim superintendent, Andrea Lilly, who's the executive director of curriculum and instruction, Wendy Peddaway, sorry, I spelled your name wrong there. It is right? Okay, sorry, then I must spell it wrong normally. CTE Director, and then Dr. Luke from the Community College. They're all very highly involved in this because it is voca, we're talking about vocational training and creating a link between what kids do in high school and what they might be going to, on in community college. So the project, as I said, is Science Engineering Agricultural Academy, and the goal is to create that. The background is that, I think, as you're aware, businesses have a great demand for higher skilled levels, sorry, higher skill levels in their entry-level positions these days, and they're just not able to find people in the local economy to do that, to do the work that's needed. And also, the students, their skills do not match up with the skills levels needed by businesses. So help, so to put this together, we need a vocational facility to match the students' training with the positions that businesses have. The stakeholders, as I've just outlined, really are existing businesses, community college, students, parents, teachers, guidance counselors, CTE directors, and obviously the workforce development allies, which include yourselves. The strategy would be to create programs in masonry, welding, carpentry, drafting, electrical, fire academy, health sciences, and agriculture, using existing teachers, as I've kind of outlined. Being able to consolidate upper-level classes into this one location, but at the same time, using the current high schools to get the basic courses for the kids. So the idea would be that they would have half a day at their homeschool and half a day at the academy, and they would, but the first two years of education would be still done at their, their homeschool. So this is a picture of the current ed tech and the colored, colored areas, and sorry, it's so small, but the colored areas would be the labs, which would be renovated to accommodate those courses that I spoke previously of. So the outcomes would be we'd have trained and trainable workforce, pathways and pipelines for students to flow into the workforce, career-based learning, instilling in students a vision of their future, and businesses able to fill current and future job openings with skilled, skilled workers. The budget, well, they offer 1.5, and obviously, we try and go as close to that as possible. But for this project, 1.25 to 1.4 million, renovation of the existing building, some equipment, and some initial personnel and transportation costs. Looking into all this, obviously, when you do something, there are potentials of risk involved. Obviously, there could be risk that renovation monies are not enough. There would also be potentially an ongoing transportation cost for taking students from their homeschools to the academy, and also, there could be some cost for distant learning into other counties. So with that, I think, given we have these, these esteemed colleagues here, I was hoping you may have some questions, or maybe they would like to make some comments to further explain the operation to you.
Yes.
One is, these grants, or do we have to come up with any money on the grant?
No, they're not saying there would be a match, just a match would be helpful in the competitiveness of the grant. I think what will happen is, we will try and show what we're doing currently in terms of workforce development, and blend this program into what we're currently doing, and show those funds as a match for this, these monies.
Mr. Evans? Did you mention the grade level that you're targeting?
Basically, the last two years of high school, yeah.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah. And this then ties in, speaking of that, this ties in all with the internships and pre-apprenticeship programs and apprenticeship programs that we're already being involved with.
And I, and I just want to say, this is a, this is exactly what we need, because basically, every child who graduates from high school is not interested in going to college. Some simply want to graduate and go to work, and this is an excellent opportunity for them to have the skills to be successful in life. So it's something that is much needed.
Correct. Thank you.
Mark?
Sir?
Would you or David like to step up and add anything, or?
Just that, sorry. Good evening. Just that, I would like to say, first and foremost, that a, a great deal of work has gone into this partnership between Martin and Wendy Peddaway and the folks in our office, Dr. Luke at Beaufort Community College, and the Golden Leaf Foundation. And I would just echo what Mr. Langley said, kind of our intention was the exact same thing, that obviously, in the past, schools did not have to compete for students, and we are in a very competitive market, and we, you know, we need every advantage to make Beaufort County Schools the best school system we can be, and we feel like this would be another alternative for our students, another way to say, this is something that we're offering. So if you're not a college-bound student, of course, obviously, these are high-level skills that you generally attend Beaufort Community College or a trade school, so it's not, but it may not be the traditional four-year school. But we feel like this would make us another competitive edge for us to attract more students to come back to Beaufort County Schools that we may have lost, or those who, we also see some potential with our homeschool students, that this might be an avenue that, to attract them as well. And, you know, again, it's an ambitious project, and 1.5 million is a lot to ask from anybody, but with the information that the team has put together, I feel very confident that we can move forward if we get this grant.
Any, any questions?
Mr. Chairman? I have a question.
Yeah, I, I would just like to echo what Mark was saying, is that to, by reiterating that the college is fully committed to moving forward with dual enrollment coursework and career and technical education, in particular, in the skilled trades, in the junior and senior years. We'll also be able to offer, if we're able to get the grant, coursework online and general education to the schools that are elsewhere in the county before they actually would need to come to the, the new academy to take their coursework and career and technical ed. So we, we stand fully behind this. I think it'd be a great pipeline into, for employability for our students, and if we can marry this up with the pre-apprenticeship program that we have going, I think this is a great segue to the workforce for a great many of our students who are being left behind.
I have a question, a couple of questions. Number one, is the Department of Public Education willing to count these students as full-time students for purposes of budgeting and funding?
Yes, there's, they would still be our students, they would just be split between buildings during the day.
Okay. When it comes to making the payments now, that one and a half million dollars, all that's going to do is capital improvements.
Yes, sir.
That's not going to pay for the cost of education, the cost of transportation back and forth, and another, another rocky schedule of getting students home after 6 o'clock at night during school year, because that's, that's what I see coming out of this. Where is the, what is your source of funding for the community college? Out of whose pocket is that money going to come?
For, for the college, we would use the existing instructors we've got to be able to teach the career and technical education as dual enrollment. So that would come out of our existing adjunct faculty budget, so I don't really see any significant cost additions as, as part of that.
You're not going to be asking for more money to fund this?
No, and, and if we did, it would come from the state anyway. So, but I don't see it as, as us needing to ask for significant money, especially from the county. For us, it's, it's a benefit to be able to, to serve these students through dual enrollment, where we would be able to obtain the money back in FTE credit from the state. So it's a wash for us.
Are the students going to get a certificate of completion of some kind, that they've completed a certain course?
Yes, sir. There are credentials in the CTE field, that if a student completes a certain pathway, then they can graduate with those credentials, and they can use that either towards community college, or when they go to an employer to show them that they're fully credentialed in a certain area.
Isn't this going to light-load the, the teachers at school? If you pull 100 students out of high school and send them out to community college after lunch every day, that's going to light-load those classes that they would have been in?
Well, the same, we'd be using the same teachers, they would be split as well. So, for example, I might start my morning in my traditional high school, and then I'd leave in the middle of the day along with my students to finish the afternoon. So we're sharing teachers between our traditional schools and this academy.
Teachers are going to accompany students to...
Well, I don't know if they're necessarily going to accompany them, but they're going to, their schedule will be split at the same time. So I would spend the day, for example, let's say I was at Washington High School for the morning, I taught two classes in the morning, in the afternoon, I might go to the new academy and teach two classes, so there aren't students at the school expecting me there. I would be teaching those students who go over to the academy.
What, what do you estimate the enrollment would be if we do this?
I think it's hard to put a number on it this time, depending on, I mean, we have, in terms of student surveys, in terms of information from our registration, there are lots of desirable courses, but I would hate to say I have a pinpoint number in mind.
Do you have any idea what the minimum number of students that you would need to make this work?
I think we would have to start. I do not know. Without growing the program, I honestly don't know.
Martin, I think, question for you. You talked about we got to put up matching grant.
Right.
Matching fund. If we did, would that improve our chances of getting the overall grant?
That's the way it's worded, but, you know, it, it's going to be dependent, I think, on the program. And what I think, going back to, to Commissioner Richardson's question, I think this is somewhat going to be pulled by the company. As part of this application is going to be letters of support from local businesses, and what is part of this is going to have to be, I hate to use the word marketing, but to some degree, you know, the idea of giving the students a vision of what their career could be. So I think, and businesses may also be willing to, we have a program right now where the businesses have provided some match. So I'm hoping that, you know, business, that they need the people, so they'll pull the program through.
I would agree with Commissioner Langley. This is something that this county needs.
Right.
To train our workforce, especially in these types of skills.
Yeah. Yeah, every, every business I visit, you know, they say they could probably hire, you know, five to 10 people immediately, and...
I want to thank the college and schools for working together in order to improve the education and the skills of our students in this county. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
One other thing. Could you step back up for a minute? This is kind of related to what Commissioner Richardson was talking about. How many students out of Washington High School...
How many students out of Washington High School are college-bound?
I would have to get back to you on that, I honestly couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay. So if we got a number of college-bound students, we can get an average of how many will go to this vocational school?
Well, I think that's one way to look at it, but you also have to look at the student schedules, transportation issues, I mean, there are a lot of factors on why students may, also how we're able to offer classes. For example, you may have students who are very interested in this, we need to make sure that we can get their basic classes, their core curriculum, as well as the CTE classes. So I don't know that, I mean, that would be a good way to start, but there will always be some variables after that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I got.
Any other questions? Martin, were you looking for action, or?
Well, we'll see after tomorrow's meeting, when we get to get the training, but yes, there will be, need to be a letter of support for the application. I just got some information about Commissioner Brin's question, apparently about 50% say they're going to college, but maybe only about 30%.
Fifty percent.
But only about 30% actually make it. So you've got about 70% of the students pursue some other form of career.
Martin, what kind of in-kind services, to make up that 20% of matching, if there's a match, what kind of in-kind services do they look for?
I'm not sure what they look for, I know what we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about a lot about, you know, like the apprenticeship program, and my type of work, and as I say, things that the businesses are doing themselves. So there's a lot of money involved in those types of transactions.
And this academy is open to all Beaufort County students?
Yes.
North and south side?
Yes. And that's where the transportation issue comes in. Because, yes, we want to make, I mean, that's the critical issue, is transporting students to the academy.
Move forward.
Are you looking for a letter of support?
We will in the application, yes.
Oh, in the application.
Okay, maybe I should quit while I'm ahead now. Our name has been associated, thanks, our name has been associated with two other projects, or the county's name. One is through East Carolina University called Regional Micro Business Program. That's Beaufort, Hyde, Martin, and Pitt. And basically, this is a program which seeks to encourage the university students to create jobs or work for companies in eastern, northeastern North Carolina. And basically, through that resource, be able to attract businesses. Again, the stakeholders are obviously the university, Miller School of Entrepreneurship, existing businesses, small business centers, Small Business Technology Development Center, community college. So the strategy really here is one more of trying to create an advisory board to understand how the communities could be developed, and how the students could be enticed into locating in northeastern North Carolina. The ECU has a lot of mega-data, as they call it, capabilities, but basically, they could assist in defining what each community, what the best program for each community would be. Also, they could quantify the resources that are in the communities already, and then coordinate with, they have created a new, I guess, community within the Miller School of Entrepreneurship, called the Horizon Living Learning Community. This basically is the idea where students are involved, not only in an education, but in terms of actually getting more involved in the community in which they live, which is eastern North Carolina. Didn't come up very well here, but on the left there is a diagram where basically, they flow through various programs, to the point where, in the end, they would launch a business in North Carolina. The programs themselves are kind of more to weed out which businesses would be most successful. And as you can see on the right, the idea is student success, public service, and regional transformation. Outcomes, additional startups, additional management staff for existing businesses in the area, business plans, succession planning for current businesses, additional community infrastructure and business grants, greater involvement by foundations, because they would be more attracted because of the skills of the students, and then greater involvement by ECU in the communities themselves. That budget is about a million dollars a year, and they're actually looking for three-year budgets, so they're looking at $3 million. And quite a bit of it is staffing up the program, and data resources, and what have you, student internships. So, that was that one. Any questions about that? I guess I should give everybody a fair shot. The third one is, the county is associated with Martin and Pitt Counties, and this is a little bit of what we're already doing, actually, in Beaufort County, in terms of workforce initiative. And here, it's to promote, and they say, career pathways, local students and job seekers, by connecting them through two training resources and local jobs in manufacturing industries. This one is more trying to encourage, through information, people to use the resources that are already available, and also the manufacturers in the particular locations. So there'd be a single location to search for manufacturing jobs and training and that type of thing. Again, very similar stakeholders. And then, as I said, create a central location for information on jobs and training, and also have a marketing campaign to sell this central location to job seekers and students and parents. We're doing a lot of this already through our existing programs. The budget for that one hasn't been fully developed yet, but it's about a million dollars also. Okay. Any questions? Okay. So tomorrow, we have a training session where we'll find out much more. A lot of the plans that have been developed will be refined, and then the application, if we're asked to apply, would be due in November, and that's where we would need the letter of support. Okay.
I guess in summarizing, you're actually going to be, Beaufort County is part of three different strategies here.
And we have been involved in three separate strategies, yes, yes. And there's been different drivers for each of the strategies. As you can tell, the school district and the community college have very much been involved in the first one. ECU's been the driver in the second, and then particularly Pitt County was more the driver in the third initially. And the twist is how Golden Leaf is going to view that 1.5 million, if you're in these different programs, how they're going to split it up. But that's up to them, I guess. Okay.
Any other comment? Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
At this time, we're down to public comment, and our first one, Ms. Lay. Say again, I remind you, three minutes.
These comments relate back to my comments about the new water meters in the county last month. I do not like being called a liar, no matter how nicely it's phrased. Mr. Alligood, in my opinion, piggybacking on another county's bidding process was not the way to bid out a very expensive water project for Beaufort County. We are two separate counties with two individual bank accounts, two separate boards of commissioners, and different ways of paying for those projects. We expect you and this board to do our bidding, and we expect to be able to look at the bids ourselves, should we want to do that. We also want to know how the, who the third party that handled that deal was, and was the third party connected in any way to the company that got the bid? In other words, was the third party affiliated with either side? I don't know that. Redirecting the taxpayers' attention also does not delete the facts. The taxpayers' water bill will be increased to cover the cost of that project, and you need to tell them what the probability is of the system being outdated before it's paid for, and exactly how do you plan to save money on this deal? Have you guys ever heard the old cliche, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it"? What's wrong with doing what we've always done? When a meter fails, replace it. Thanks to President Trump, there is light at the end of the tunnel, the economy's getting better, and when it gets better, in this tier-one county, we might see this in a different light. Right now, we, the people, want answers to our questions. If I'm wrong, I'll apologize. If I'm not wrong, I expect an apology. And Mr. Booth, I think you were right when you said we need more Hood Richardsons on this board.
He'd be great for that.
Thank you. Mr. John Anderson.
I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Cory Anderson, my nephew. I've been here before, you guys probably know what has gone on with Cory. He died in the custody of the sheriff in May of 2017. I have a statement here from my mother, who had, whose son was in the jail as well. I think it relates to what's going on with Cory. She said, "My son was beat up, had a concussion, and stayed three days in the hospital. We found out when our son told us the next time we went to visitation, and I was told if I didn't hush about my complaints, that we weren't informed. We were told if we didn't, our son would lose his visitation rights. He may have been in jail, but he's still a person, and he is still my child." He also has a different story than what's being told about Cory's last few days in jail, before they finally took him to the hospital. On behalf of Cory, and in reference to an article in the Washington Daily News, that was 8/218, they failed to report that the board is still waiting on the opinion from the Attorney General, unless you guys have gotten it, and I don't know about it. They failed to report what I think is an important piece of information in the article from the School of Government. And this is what it says. "The county does have some input into how the jail provides medical care. The jail's medical plan must be approved by the local or district health director and adopted by the board if it is adequate to protect the health and welfare of prisoners." General Statute 153A-225A. "That approval and adoption process might be a point at which the county could request that the sheriff include some sort of family notification procedure when inmates are taken outside of the jail for care." There's also information from the North Carolina Department of Correction Division of Prisoners Policy, AD 8-2. "When a hospitalized inmate's condition is classified as seriously ill or critically ill, and in cases of death, the facility head or designated will notify the individuals designated by the inmates as emergency contacts." All of these things relate directly to Cory. We're still waiting on a response from the Attorney General, we're still waiting on the policy, we still don't have the policy, and my question to you guys tonight as a board, do you guys know what the policy that the jail has right now is when an inmate is taken to the hospital? We haven't received that from them, I haven't heard anything from you guys. I think that's a legitimate question for us to be able to answer. So the least I think that you guys could do, or need to do, is find out what the policy is, and then either approve the ordinance that's on the board, is going to be up for discussion tonight, or put some type of policy in place, as allowed, as I just read, by General Statute 153A, from the School of Government's opinion, which was read right here in the meeting, I don't know, a couple of meetings ago, maybe, but this part of that policy or opinion was not looked at, or I don't believe it was considered like it should be. So the least that I feel like you guys should do, on Cory's behalf and on anybody else's behalf, just like the mother that I just read the statement from, is either adopt, either approve the ordinance, or adopt some type of policy and include it in the county medical jail plan, that you guys have a copy of, and I will have when I come back next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You were right on your three minutes.
I worked hard to get it.
I see it. Did you want to speak tonight? Okay, is it Randy?
Randy Stip.
Okay, step up there.
I've got about two things I want to ask. We've got places down here on the water there that we can't use because of crab pots sit right in front of us there, and I wonder if y'all could do something about that? We're paying a lot of taxes for property that we can't use.
You're talking about Havens Gardens?
I'm sorry, you have to pick up, I can't hear you.
You're talking about Havens Gardens, that there's crab pots out in front of Havens Garden?
No, downriver there, I've got a place down Cold Point. And they set these crab pots right up here on your pier. The grandchildren can't even swim around the pier, you can't even throw a hook and line out, you know? I think, if y'all could do anything about it, and maybe pass a ordinance, you know, to where you can't put a crab pot or net so close to your pier. Because the marine fishery says that you can't touch their crab pot and move it without getting a ticket, you know? And it's a nuisance, you know? If you go up Bath Creek, South Creek, and all, they've got these crab pots where you can't hardly get a boat into them, you know? Lucky y'all to look into that and see what you can come up with. Or you can just make me quit paying these high-dollar taxes on this riverfront property because we can't use it, you know? I mean, we work hard, and then we pay these taxes, and you work all day, you run down there at even, you can't even, you can't even use it, you can't even put your boat in your boat slip sometimes because crab pot's parked out there. But they got license, you know, to use the river. The river's everybody's, they claim, you know? I talked to marine by, and they said y'all can't do nothing about it. I feel like y'all could check into it and see what you could do about it. You know, that's all I ask, you know? Of course, you know, if you just knock all my property taxes off, I might could learn to put up with a little bit of. And one other thing I'd like to ask you, I had talked to several before, y'all went up on our trash disposal fee, and I want to know why? Is it to cover Craven County? Because Craven County comes over there and fills our dump sites up, and we can't use them. They're not paying the taxes, the disposal fee that we're paying. A lot of counties have stickers that if you haven't got that sticker, you can't dump. You know, you're trashing the site there. I feel like something ought to be done about it, you know, if possible, you know? I mean, when you mail out our tax bills, you know, you can stick a sticker in there. These are simple as that, sticker can't cost so much. Of course, now, these people haul it there at the trash site, and once you carry trash down there, it belongs to the county commissioner, then, or the county commissioner? Trash? They making that money off of that trash or something there, you know? I don't think so. But it's an issue you need addressed. I mean, you know, I sit there on my farm, and I see pickup truck go by pulling trash, hauling trash out of another county. And if I carry my little bit of trash down there, I can't dump it because the dump's So would y'all please check into that for me? That's three things I would ask for y'all to kind of check on. I'll come back and ask to see what y'all come up with, maybe what, next month, a month there, talk about it.
We'll give you three minutes next month.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that right quick?
Yes, sir.
I will personally check into those crab pots myself.
Okay.
I'm trying, I got time to do it.
I appreciate it, it's a nuisance there, but.
I don't know what the law is on it, but I'll check in, I'll have an answer for you next time.
Well, I believe y'all got a little bit of pull there, y'all can't let marine fishery just run right over you, you know? But.
Get out and get shot.
It's a lot, it's a lot of people there that's putting up with this, you know, and they getting ill and that. I don't want to have to run up and down the whole both sides of rivers and get everybody to sign a piece of paper, you know, petition, that's not enough, you ain't going to be able to do nothing about it. But I appreciate it, see what y'all could do about it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to items for consent. Get a motion to approve the items.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. We're down to item number I, items for discussion. The first one on there is payment status of all EMS and fire units with advances. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I asked for this information having to do with how funds are dispersed, and when funds are dispersed, and what the rules are to fire and EMS units. And since it's on the agenda, you know, I'll go into why I asked for the information. There was a rumor circulating within the last month that some of the fire and EMS units weren't making their payments for employees' insurance and some other things, and that they were behind in their bills. And we've had problems with this in the past, and when it's brought up, it's, you always get the song and dance, and everything's fine, y'all go back to sleep up there on your county commission job, and don't worry about it. And then we come back later on, and we find out they're wanting a wad of money to get themselves bailed out. So, you know, my question is, how do we know that the tax money that's collected from the taxpayers is actually being spent properly by the fire and EMS units? Do we have a mechanism for that? for that?
Brian, would you want to comment?
The board established, I guess it's been several years ago, when you had interim manager, Mr. Winley, that we got copies of their audits. You don't do audits for fire departments because y'all agreed they didn't need to do that because it was an expensive process. But we do get theirs. We have the ability to go in any time and look at their books if the board would like to look at those books. Part of the contract requires that.
Well, you know, the contract is in here that we have with the EMS units. I mean, I didn't see anything in there that was strong enough language for us to go in and look at their books. I know I've argued for it in the past, but I just didn't see anything in there. But if you say that we have, then I have a candidate that we need to look at their books, because rumors are that they're way behind in their bills.
If the board would like to direct that we ask that, we'll do that. We're unable to act on a single commissioner's request, but we'll be glad to act.
That's the way it's always worked, and it never goes anywhere.
I would simply make the comment that the board acts and speaks as one, and we're happy to do that if the board wants to do that.
Well, I could just speak for myself. I've not heard of any rumor. Nobody's approached me about any EMS or fire district that is behind on their bills. Does any other commissioner have any... have you heard a rumor, or got a telephone call, or anything?
Nothing. I haven't heard a word.
I make a move that we do an audit on Chacoentity EMS and fire so we can see what the actual conditions are, whether the accusations are true or not.
Is there a second to his motion? It dies.
This is the way it has always worked. The public doesn't know how the money is spent most of these places.
Do we have any concrete information? Is it just a rumor?
How are you going to know until you go do an audit?
I could say I heard it was also.
Well, you have a responsibility to the public if accusations are made, to either clear the people that are being accused or convict them of whatever it is. You have that responsibility, you know.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Shane.
Good evening, commissioners. I didn't even know I was on the agenda tonight, so this is as much a surprise for me as it is for anybody. I will say that on half of our budget and our books, our books are open. They're audited every year through a state audit. We just went through a forensic audit last year, which is clear. So if at any point in time you want the books, we'll be glad to get them for you.
Does the town also audit your books?
Town audits all of our books. It's actually sent to the state auditor, so the town doesn't audit. They, whenever the town of Chacoentity is audited, all our books are audited also.
Does the town of Chacoentity write your checks?
Yes, sir.
So they handle all your money?
Yes, sir. I handle no money there.
So the Chacoentity EMS handles no funding?
Correct.
So all the funding's under the control of the town of Chacoentity?
Correct. Yes.
Are there any financial issues?
No, sir.
How often do you get a forensic audit from the state?
The forensic was last year. We get... we have an audit by state as per the city government every year. Yes, sir.
Okay. Plus the town?
Yes.
Do you know of any rumors?
I hear rumors every day, sir. What would you like to hear today? Last month, it was we borrowed a bunch of money from people. So any rumors, my phone, call me. You know, I hear rumors every day. You know, in the last two months, I've heard that we were buying a helicopter.
Good dog.
Yeah. We were building a helicopter hangar beside our station. I think me and Carney talked about that today. I think a lot of it's politically motivated.
No doubt.
It's the season.
Yes, sir.
No doubt.
And like I say, I'm available if you'd like questions, me, my board, anytime. We meet the third Tuesday at 10:30 in the morning. Please, come on.
Thank you very much, Shane. Thank you for what you do for the association here in the county. All right, item number two is the update on the ordinance of the sheriff identified designated persons when an inmate is admitted to the hospital. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, part of this is sparked by that article that was in the newspaper, which gave a lot of facts that were strung together to tell a story in a certain way. And I've got a sign up on the front of my building that says, "This issue is not over with yet," and two reasons that it's not over with. The first reason is that we haven't heard from the Attorney General office as to their opinion about this. And they're going to be kind of shaky in giving an opinion, or they're going to think about this for a while, because they don't want to, with the political situation in North Carolina, what it is, they don't want to say anything that might offend the sheriff. Well, too bad. This is a serious issue. It involves people. And so I'm sure they're going to walk some fancy words at us when we hear from them. And the other reason that it's not over with is the public's not willing to give this up yet. There's a lot of people in the community that are very concerned about this. And I'm thankful, because what usually happens on these things is after they stay in the public for a while, you start hearing other stories, just as was presented tonight, about what really goes on in the jail that you don't know about. And I suspect that we're going to start hearing even more stories about this. And people need to come forward. You don't have to be identified. If you have a bad situation or a case of abuse in the jail, you need to come forward and start talking about it, and telling people about it, especially commissioners. You need to tell me as a commissioner, because I'm the one that's going to tell it again. Some of the rest of them are not going to tell it again. They don't want to tell it again. So my question to the county manager and to the county attorney is, have you heard from the Attorney General's office?
No, I have not. Mr. Richardson, the letter from the Attorney General is to you and says that he has turned this over to have an opinion. And my question, I guess, would be to you. Have you heard anything?
No, I haven't heard a thing from him. I've been...
He apparently had my letter because he copied me on that.
I sent him your letter. He said he didn't have your letter. So I sent him your letter.
He says he has it.
Oh, he has it because I sent it to him.
Well, I sent it to him also. And I sent you a copy.
Well, he didn't have the one you sent. He didn't have the one you sent, but he has the one I sent.
Well, he apologized for the delay, and he recites in here what he understood that the facts were, that is relating to notification of third parties when a county jail inmate is taken to the hospital, which is the issue here, I think. "I am asking one of our attorneys to research this matter and prepare an advisory letter in response to your request." That's your request. So I've not heard anything. Now, we did have, was it four other responses? Three others, anyway. Three other responses. And they were all that to the effect of what I originally told you about this.
Well, as a manager, have you heard anything?
I'm not sure. That wasn't what I was...
All right. Well, this will be on the agenda again next month. Has anyone else heard anything?
Nobody from the hood.
You guys in the loop?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
I'll tell you, I made a statement here two months ago that if we found out that it was legal, and we had the authority to make the sheriff notify the hospital or notify the people that are in the hospital, that I will make the motion myself. But everything that I've said, everything I see, everything I read right now indicates that we do not have the authority to do it. And if we were to make a ordinance and pass it amongst ourselves, it would probably wind up in a lawsuit with the sheriff's administration. So we have to be very careful how we do this. If we do it, it's got to be totally leaked. We can't go out on a limb and say, "This is what we're going to do regardless." It's got to be leaked.
Well, I believe it's a requirement from the state employees to do that. So I would think that if the state employees have to make notifications, certainly the county. Didn't y'all give a big speech in here last month about how you're subordinate to the state and all that kind of stuff? Well, I would think if the state has to do it, that your subordination puts you first in line to also have to do it.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I wanted to say something. I understand it's from what the county attorney has mentioned to us, that from everybody we've heard from, we don't have the authority to render that. I also understand that the representative sheriff's office, back in May 17, 2017, did instrumental in assisting the clerk of... from the clerk of the Superior Court in the matter of the estate, availability of obtaining information. I do understand that back in February, it was offered that they would supply... they did supply a copy of the table of contents of all the SOPs that the sheriff has, and nobody since has gone and received those. So I think there's a lot... there could be some misinformation here. Maybe we don't have all the facts or something. But we are getting cer... I'm hearing information and seeing information where the sheriff and the chief deputy have been involved in this situation. So I don't even know at this point in time whether we have the authority or not, whether we should even get involved in the ordinance. It's almost like who struck John. And as I said six months ago, I wonder how much of this is a political issue?
I can answer that. It's all a political issue.
I'm not asking for an answer. My statement wasn't directed at that.
I'm sure you didn't want my answer, but this is a political issue because it involves the running of county government and common decency.
November 7th, the law will be over.
For you.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move to item number three. This is the FEMA flood map update. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, we're back where we were a year or so ago. The FEMA flood maps still have not come out. We've got people in this county that are paying $3,000 or $4,000 for flood insurance. When the FEMA, the new FEMA maps come out for approval by the Board of County Commissioners, most of those people are going to get some significant reductions in what they're paying for flood insurance. This is money that will circulate in Beaufort County when that happens. From the work that I do, and we do a lot of flood work, there's probably $5 million of reduction in flood insurance premiums for the citizens of this county once the commissioners approve those maps. And the reason they have to be approved by commissioners is the flood ordinance is enforced through the local building ordinance. So when we approve those maps, it goes to the building ordinance, then they start enforcing those. Then insurance rates start coming down. Whether they're going to have people to refile or not, I don't know. They shouldn't. You already got elevation certificates. You just minus a number, and you know where you are. But there are significant savings for most of the people in this county. And I'm going to, again, ask these commissioners who claim they talked to our esteemed senators and elected officials in Raleigh, which was a waste of time, that we need to put our lobbyists behind this so that we can find out what's really going on with these flood maps. Because the excuses that FEMA is giving don't make sense. They claim that there's some sort of a universal map, and that the edges have to fit up. This is pure bunk. Because if you look at it, you'd have to map the whole world, the whole earth, in order to get these things approved. This stuff does not make sense. And we need to get behind it because this is a significant savings to the people of this county that we have a lot of say in. So I'll make a motion just to make it work. I move that we direct our lobbyists to get behind this FEMA flood stuff and find out where the bottleneck is and put a stop to it.
I'll second that, but I...
I was to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I was going to second it, too.
Yeah. I don't... I'm going to second it, and I'm going to vote for it. But this is how the federal government works. County government works slow enough like it is. But when you get on a federal level, they're going to take as long as they want to. They don't care whether it hurts people in Beaufort County or not. Simple as that. So we can get our lobbyist, that he may be able to get something done. I know that he'll do it if he deems necessary. But we ain't going to get nothing done until the feds release those maps.
Brian, you looked like you were getting ready to make a statement.
What I would say to you is, your contract with your lobbyist only covers North Carolina issues. If you want him to work on federal issues, it's going to cost you money. You might as well set some money aside for it. I would also say to you, it would be a waste of your time and your money. I had a conversation with the folks at DPS, Department of Public Safety, earlier this week. They're still on track. They have the letter of request to FEMA submitted in August. Once that occurs and FEMA approves that, then there's a six-month mandatory wait period before those maps are implemented. That gives the local jurisdictions time to adopt the map, not approve the map, adopt the map. And once you adopt the map, then you change your flood ordinance to match that. If you don't do that, then they kick you out of the flood program. So we're still on track, as was the original timeline, to be the first quarter of next year for that to be final.
Brian, how can this not be a statement for a FEMA program?
It's a FEMA. It's a federal program.
I understand that, but it's got to go through the state?
It comes from the state up to FEMA. The state does most of the work on it, and they submit it to FEMA. And then FEMA looks at it, and if there were any comments or complaints that were made during the hearing period that was put out there, then they looked at those and made adjustments. And they made some adjustments. I mean, there were some folks who submitted some things, some adjustments were made in some of those maps. It is now at the point where all that's been cleared, and they're waiting to submit that. Again, it's my understanding that sometime in August, that map, that letter, that request for letter of final determination, letter of final determination gets submitted, and then they would say, "It's good to go." And you go into a mandatory six-month holding period, which allows everybody to get done locally what needs to get done. It allows you to adopt the map. It allows entities that may not have a flood ordinance, or whatever they need to do, to get their ordinance in compliance with the new maps. That gives you the opportunity to get all that done. Once that's done, after that six-month period ends, the new maps go into effect. And like I say, if you don't do that, then they kick you out of the flood program. You can't get flood insurance. So you pretty much got to do it.
All right. Well, this is August, then. We're going to get the letter this month.
They're submitting the request this month. And what they say is, once that happens, you go into a mandatory six-month hold period to get all this stuff done locally. And then once that six... So if they said tomorrow you got the letter back, then you would wait six months, and then at the end of that six months, then it becomes effective, and all the rates can change then.
Well, but I, you know, it's like a journey of a thousand miles. It begins with one step. We don't get this first step going. Sooner we get this first step going, the sooner we're down the road. I think that I just, you know, the state, they've sung this song to me before, and it doesn't make sense. The maps were supposed to give you an idea of what's going on here with the foot dragon. It was 2013 that the maps were supposed to have been ready and approved. 2013, they could do the studies. Give them a year to do the study. The maps have been online. You can go online right now and see the maps. They've been up there for two years, at least two years. And still, you've got the foot dragon from the feds on this. If we don't get with our congressman and our federally-elected officials on this and put some pressure on them, then this thing's going to sit here just like we're doing now. Promises, promises, promises. And that's all we're getting. Squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Roger, can I?
Yes.
Roger, is there anything we can do to speed this up?
Not as I'm aware of. We've had the conversation when we went to... when we last had the conversation, we were at the NACO conference, Legislative Conference in DC. We had conversations with our congressional delegation. They pretty much sent us back the exact same information and said, "Once that gets approved..." My understanding is, we're on schedule with what the original schedule was. So, I mean, I can't speak anymore to that, except what I've been told by the state and the folks from the congressional offices.
So if there's a proposal now or recommendation, it's like spinning on wheels?
I mean, I'm just... what I'm saying to you is, it's my recommendation to you that if you were to... you could certainly throw money at it. You're going to have to pay Mr. McCleese extra money to do that because it's not in your contract, and he's not going to be able to get anything done because there's still a six-month mandatory hold period. And my understanding is that they're submitting those letters this month, which was what they told us at the beginning of the process. I mean, you certainly have the ability to do that, and...
Well, if we want to... what I hear you saying, if we want to waste money, let's give it to them.
What if he just worked with the legislators?
They don't have any control.
It's a federal control. It's a federal control.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to make.
You're not going to.
Well, but look, you can always go to your elected, your senators and your congressmen and get them to extract some kind of a letter from whoever's running FEMA in Washington, DC. You know, that may tell you more than you know now. I don't doubt what you're saying, Brian, because that's essentially the way the process works. But by the same token, if you don't put some pressure on these people, they're going to do what all government employees do. Sleep as long as they can, or they have to do something.
Commissioner Evans?
As a matter of fact, two or three of us, including Mr. Richardson and myself, we met Walter Jones, and we begged, and we begged. We went over everything we talked about. We need you to get those maps approved. I haven't heard a word. Now, just the way the government works, the, the last day, Congress approved the incident in the flooding insurance. It could have been a pure mess, but they waited to the last day. So if we think we're going to push anybody around, it's just not going to happen. It'd be nice, it'd be nice. I mean, we're going to go out and send a surveyor out to redo re-elevations and do all that kind of stuff. But until we get those maps, here was it.
What I'm asking for is aimed at getting the maps. I think if you can get your congressman and your senators to all write letters to the, to the administrator over in Homeland Security, which is where FEMA is, saying, what is going on? We need an answer. At least you got an answer from the top that's going to filter out somewhere, and we'll know a lot better where we are. Because we've been taking people's word now for three years, and, you know, and we still don't have the FEMA flood maps approved, although they've been, the maps have been done. The engineering company, Dewberry and Davis, I believe it is, that does those things, they're online, you know? So it's got to be bureaucracy that's holding it up.
Did, did you get a response from Walter Jones?
No, I didn't. What I'm, what I'm advocating, Jerry, is that we actually do something by asking our federal officials to go to FEMA and get a letter from them about what the status of this project is. What's wrong with that?
We did ask them to.
Why don't you rescind that, that motion and make another motion that we do that?
Well, that's, well, I can. Whatever the board's willing to approve is fine with me, that we, that we make an inquiry of our federal representative, elected representatives in Washington, DC, that we get a letter from FEMA, there, not, not North Carolina, but a letter from, on a federal level, describing what the status of the approval of the maps is, and where we are. Now, that letter has to be sent down the line. People have to know that people are asking questions when this happens. Sitting here and doing nothing is not going to get you anything, because so far, it hasn't gotten you anything.
Well, it's just like Jerry said, and I agree with you, we need to get it done, but it's like Jerry said, you, myself, and Jerry went to Congressman Jones' office. The other commissioners went to the senator's office. They were told, he was, he told us at that time that they would get together and write a letter to FEMA, and secretly push this along.
Did they? Did you get a copy of a letter?
I don't know what, I didn't.
You're right. You're exactly right. Walter directed his chief of staff to do this. Well, it hasn't been done, guys. What do you do? Do you lay down and die? Or do you go back to him and say, look, Walter, you didn't do what you said you were going to do? What's, what is the status of this? That's all I'm asking for. You guys are sitting around here making excuses to do nothing, which is very typical.
We're not, we're not making excuses, but we are not.
Well, do something then, vote for my motion.
I ain't voting for nothing you can do.
See, see, this is what your problem is in Beaufort County, is this kind of contention from people who are not willing to represent you, but they tell you that they're on your side, and you just vote for us, we're the greatest people in the world, but they won't do anything to help you save your money.
I'll make a motion that we send a letter to Senator Willis and Senator Burr.
And Congressman Jones.
No, you need to put the congressional.
And Congressman Jones.
Boys in it too.
Would you amend that, not you, well, would you amend that, Mr. Busio? Would you also amend?
Since we already have a motion that's been approved in second, why don't we back up? Would you amend?
Rescind is by your favor.
Just amend it. Would you amend, would you agree to amend?
I'm willing to do whatever helps the people in Beaufort County. I'll amend my motion to fit Commissioner Busio's motion.
Okay. And the congressman.
Add the congressman, and who's the congressman south of us? We need to get him too, all the way down to Wilmington.
Two senators of all the congressmen's state.
Yeah, all the, okay, that's fine, that's what we want.
Okay.
Second.
Who, who seconded the original motion? Did you second?
I seconded.
I made the motion.
He's agreed to put yours in here.
Oh, okay.
We're consolidating.
The manager will know which, which.
I'll second.
All right, all right.
Mr. Chairman, we actually did send a letter. When we came back, we sent a letter, and we got an email response. I forwarded that email response to all of y'all. So there's been response from them. If you send them a letter now, what they'll say, what FEMA will say is, we haven't received the request yet from the state, because the state hasn't yet filed the request for the letter of determination.
Oh, now we're getting somewhere.
It is going in this month, is what the folks at, at the state say.
Well, what's their problem? Why are they dragging their feet?
Because they've got 100 counties, I guess, to do.
All right, let's go back. We've made progress in this. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to vote on the motion, and then I have another motion.
Would it not be nice if we put in the letter that we just talked about, that it's in process? Will you please follow up on it?
Well, I wouldn't put it in process. I'd ask what the status is from the federal end, because if the request hasn't been made, they're going to write you a letter back and say, we haven't heard anything from the state of North Carolina. Gee, we're making progress now.
Okay.
You don't need to give them the answer to the question.
Katie, do you think you can?
No.
You can't?
No, she can't.
I move that, I move that we make a strong inquiry, Commissioner Busio, see if you're going along with this. We make a strong, a strong request to our federal senators and all of the state representatives, that they make a request from FEMA, federal FEMA, as to the status of the flood insurance rate maps in eastern North Carolina.
Before I second that, I just want to ask Brian a question. Should you have a follow-up discussion with the state before that letter?
That's the motion, that's coming after this.
I have had a follow-up conversation.
I've got another. I've got a, I've got a better motion than that.
I'm not sure whether I got an email from Commissioner Richardson, or whether I got an email from you or Commissioner Brennan.
From me?
Last week.
Yeah.
And I sent that email to the state, and they followed up and said, we still haven't sent it, it's going this month. And then there's the mandatory six-month period.
Well, I'm ready to vote.
All right.
I think all y'all have that.
You want?
I second that. As long as, but I'm going to rescind my second, I don't like the second.
Oh, well, you just, no, you can't do that. You can't, you cannot unring the bell. Once this thing's.
You can make another motion.
You're going to like, you're going to like my next motion after this one, I can tell you that now.
Can I ask the manager a question?
Yes.
Regardless of what we do, that six-month period got to be, it got to stay, right?
Yes, that's, that's.
Regardless, if we send Mr. Richardson to Raleigh, talk to Burr, Teles, Jones, Holder, nothing going to change within six months.
Well, yes, and once the letter gets submitted by the state to the feds, then there's a six-month period which you will have to wait to get.
That's mandatory.
Yeah, that's mandatory.
If you never start, you're not going to get there.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
My next motion is, since we've determined that the bottleneck is in the state of North Carolina, that we ask our lobbyists whom we are paying to get on this and get us a good answer as to the status of the situation in Raleigh, and what the bottleneck is in Raleigh, because there's a bottleneck in Raleigh, based on what we think now.
What we've been told is, it's being submitted, I mean, I have, I have a follow-up listed on my calendar, call them at the end of this month.
Well, let's put McCleese on this. We're paying him.
But that may disrupt everything.
No, it won't. No, no. It's the last night rule.
I'm happy to call the lobbyist tomorrow.
With some lobbyists, we're going to give you what you want, get you out of our office.
All right, you've heard the motion, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion? Let's vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
I'm against using the lobbyists.
All right.
It's going to, well, first of all, we pay him almost $50,000 a year, and he doesn't do anything for us, so maybe.
Well, he can do something now.
He wants to do something.
He may disrupt the conversation Brian's had with the state.
No, 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 no.
Okay, we're down to item number four, mail-in tax bill update. Is that Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I just want to ask the, the tax administrator, when are these things going to be mailed?
Mr. Chairman, I presented this last month, and I said 13th through the 17th, we, that's next week, we plan to mail the tax bills out. We're on schedule. But you know, we deal with the NCPTS, Farragut, and South Data, they have a bottleneck, if something happens there, we can back up with it. Farragut knows that we want to mail bills next week. South Data knows we want to mail bills next week. So it could be as early as next Wednesday, it could be as late as Friday, but we hope it out, so next week, the week following week, people will have their tax notice.
Thank you. All right, item number five, solar energy facilities. Commissioner Busio.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To members of the board, I just want to bring up a few items associated with the solar facilities. I do recognize we have a committee working on updating the ordinance. So I'm not talking about impacting owners to do what they want with their land, but I just want to bring up a couple of issues that, that we need to be aware of as a county. One of the things that is problematic is that some of these panels are made with perfluorinated alkylated substances. They refer to them as PFAS. And also the, they're used in the, in some panels, the fluoropolymer teflon film, which is included in components of solar cells and panels. I'm sure you're aware that chemical manufacturer Clem was down in Fayetteville has contaminated Cape Fear River with these chemicals. And the state is doing a study of the contamination in the water, Cape Fear River, and also by, by collecting alligators and different kinds of fish, and see if they're contaminated with GenX. GenX is a, through the process with the fluor chemicals, you could end up with GenX. EPA now is doing some studies on GenX and the fluor chemicals, which they haven't done in the past. And GenX, which is very close to a chemical called C8, where Clemex was, Chem was, was fined about $670 million back in 2017. And C8, it's the only information they have, and they're trying to see whether GenX is similar to it. Gen, C8 was linked to kidney, to testicle cancer, thyroid disease, hypertension, and other health problems. So in your packet is a paper, a research paper that I wrote with references to it, and then different articles that I pulled out that deal with GenX, and the possibility if it contaminates a water supply or a ground level, if it will. Or if those panels will be used in Beaufort County. And I think one thing we have to be concerned about, or not concerned about, but get some assurances from the solar, solar energy facilities that what type of chemicals are going to be utilized in those panels. Some panels are not made with these fluor chemicals, and some panels are made with them. And I think that's some of the things that, that we need to look at, to try to ensure ourselves. The other thing is, is we're aware, and this goes along with the, the resolution we passed earlier, is the state used to, we used to give a tax abatement, the state cut it out, but they pushed it down to the county, and we're giving them an 80%, 80% tax abatement. So the chairman brought that up, and, and hopefully our association will look at that as a priority with the state, so it's not costing our taxpayers money. And as, so as more and more solar facilities are built, the, the loss in revenue to the counties becomes higher and higher. So those are the couple of things, and I don't want to take up too much time, but the residents of the county can read all these attachments. There was also a study done back in 2013 by a company called. It was prepared for a bunch of, a number of citizens back in Denver, North Carolina, and it was done by Fred Peck and Associates, and it shows the impact of solar energy facilities on land values. But rest assured that the committee put together by this board to look at the ordinance of the county is taking this into consideration, and some of the things that, hopefully that we will put in place on these, on these solar energy facilities. Like I said, when I started my discussion, it's not that we want to stop them, and it's not that we're going to put in stringent controls, but it's some controls in order to make sure that we have some control over the type of panels they use, so we don't end up contaminating any of our land. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment, some comments on Commissioner Busio's report. The, you know, I, I, let me say this to begin with, I strongly support the, and I'm going to vote for the tax resolution, because we're getting taken advantage of there. I think the, the really horrible things about this for the public is what the government has done. This all, to be political about it, this all came out of the Obama administration, and the carbon footprint and all of that stuff is where this stuff originated. And what they did was they put great tax benefits on people who were willing to invest in this, to the point that, you know, well, people that had a lot of money couldn't afford not to invest in it, because they're getting all their money back, plus a profit. And the thing that Commissioner Busio's report points out is how inefficient solar power is. It only works five or six hours a day. So while you think you're, and, and plus, the state has allowed the solar companies and the power companies to increase your power rate based on what it costs them to produce solar and wind power. On and on this thing goes, the public is getting abused, the pocketbook, like you would not believe it. That's the horrible part of all of this. The part that I have a little bit of a problem agreeing with or disagreeing with is the GenX stuff, because the studies have never been done to see how this impacts human or mammals, and people, you just don't know. So when people are telling you it's bad stuff, you know, wait until the studies come out, because they're probably not going to show what, what people would like for them to show. And I'll tell you one reason for this. Teflon, all of that non-stick cookware you've got in your house, if you believe the GenX stuff, you need to go home and throw it all in the garbage, because that's what teflon is. So be, wait until the studies come out, wait until you see before this is over with what, what the impacts are.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Richardson, that's one of the studies they're doing now. It's going to be interesting to see what comes up in the fishing alligators.
Yeah.
And the fluor chemicals have been taken out of the teflon, after the state paid $670 million in penalties.
Oh, have they? Okay. Well, it's teflon family.
I'm not sure when that study will come out.
Years. It'll be years.
The state's doing that one, and EPA is doing other studies.
Okay, gentlemen, get Commissioner Evans.
I noticed three members of the board went to a solar panel meeting when we were at the national convention. It was pretty interesting to me. It seemed like western Mississippi pretty much is going through a big drought, and Utah, Arizona, California, Washington, part of Oregon, we're talking about, that's big business for them. They're, they're big into any renewable, whether it's wind, solar, and all that. But they was, you know, they were talking about, again, the farmland is such a drought, there's no way to really raise any crop, there's no way to really feed the cattle. They're getting somewhere between something like the average, some $375 to $1,000. They went through, is there any hazardous material in there? I think anybody, anything that goes to California, I think it's pretty safe to say there's not, but, but they give us a lot of data. The other thing that we've talked about in here is a bond and irrevocable local letter of credit and all that kind of stuff. And if, we actually heard the flip side of that. Are we going to start charging Walmart a bond, so they up and leaving 20? Are we going to start charging Walmart a bond, so they up and leave in 20 years? We have to go out there where they sit, paint thinner? So it says be careful on some of this stuff, that if you treat one one way, you can't try and treat somebody else different. But we heard, I've gone back and listened to the audio two or three times, and it was more positive than, a lot more positive than it was any kind of negative on that. But that's, you were in the same meeting, and so was Gary.
Well, it's pretty much the same that we've heard. The only thing that came out of that was the fact that all 50 states are doing the same thing that we are here in North Carolina. And it really falls down to the local government. You know, nobody's addressing it at the federal level or the state level. As a matter of fact, if I understand it correctly, the IRS, the federal and the state tax credits are gone. The only tax credit that's left in North Carolina is at the local level. They haven't lowered the tax.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Senator Bill Cook put a bill in, and the solar energy lobbyists are so strong that the bill didn't go anyplace. And he was going to do it over four years to do away with the 80%. And the other thing you should be aware of, that study I referred to, one county had to lower their assessed values around the solar facility by 30%. That's how much the property values dropped. And when you read these documents in here, and you begin to see the other side of the story, and the argument about, well, Walmart and a solar facility is quite different. To the one estimate that I've seen about removing a solar facility, let's say 600 acres, if you're going to decommission it, just the panel alone is $2, plus transportation, plus cost of removing the stations that they sit on. So to deactivate a 600-acre facility today could probably cost you about $1,500,000. So if these corporations, which are LLCs, and every three to five years they change LLCs, when it gets down to the life of it, whoever rented the land or the place walks away from it, the county ends up holding it, and the county is a taxpayer. So these are things that you have to take into consideration as a county. Not where blinders.
We found a point on that. Again, what they're saying is they've done it enough now. All of that's negotiated upfront. Secondly, they actually are taxing on personal property. That's what they're treating it as, they're not treating as the land is the value of it, so it's actual personal property.
Well, the land value also goes up if it's on a lease, so both of them. The only, and the ax steering committee at the state level, state association, we've had experts in there, and the only thing that we've been told at this point in time that's proven is zinc builds up, and you cannot grow peanuts.
Peanuts.
And that's the only thing we've been taught. Other than that, we've been told it's environmentally safe.
Also, that is true about the peanuts, but you have a chemical that you can put back in the soil that will do away with it, and then you could grow peanuts.
Right, now peanut acreage is down because of price, so I'm not sure that that's going to be... It's not, we have very few peanuts in Beaufort County.
A lot of people won't grow peanuts.
Yeah. We're a little past seven, so we're going to take our break, and we'll be back in 10 minutes.
We're adding two items for decision. The first one is the amendment to the subdivision ordinance. Jamie?
So this is a proposed text amendment to the subdivision ordinance. It was proposed to clarify the requirement to upgrade nonconforming easements to 50 feet in width when a subdivision occurs. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of this text amendment. You heard it when there's the public comment, but I'll read through it again so you can follow in your packets and ask any questions. The text that is highlighted would be new language, and the rest is already existing in the ordinance. So starting at section 404.2 easements, subsection A would read, "Existing easements recorded on or before the adoption of this ordinance shall be considered nonconforming and are not required to meet the requirements of this ordinance." And then the new language. However, when a subdivision occurs adjacent to an existing easement, if the easement serves the subdivision, the portion or entirety of the easement which serves the subdivision shall no longer be considered nonconforming and must meet the requirements of this ordinance. Subsection B and C stays the same. Going down to subsection D currently reads, "Private road easement shall be a minimum of 50 feet in width and shall be recorded with the lots." New language. When a subdivision occurs adjacent to an existing nonconforming easement, if the easement serves the subdivision, the portion or entirety of the easement which serves the subdivision must be upgraded to meet the standard. This would require providing a 25-foot easement if the subdivision only occurs on one side of the private road, or a 50-foot easement if the subdivision occurs on both sides of the private road. Then going to section 404.1 lots, subsection D, and going down to number nine. And number nine would be added and would read, "When a special subdivision occurs adjacent to a nonconforming access easement, if the access easement serves the special subdivision, the portion or entirety of the access easement which serves the special subdivision shall no longer be considered nonconforming and must meet the requirements of this ordinance." And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of Jamie? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the planning board's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. It's a second, second by Commissioner Busiak. Any discussion, question? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. The next one is the road name petition off Caton and Thorpe Lane. Jamie?
And you should have a staff report in your packet. This is a little bit more complicated than most petitions to name a private road, so bear with me. The location is off Caton Road and Thorpe Lane. The property which contains the existing easement that the applicant is requesting a name for is addressed 100 Thorpe Lane in the Chalkwoodity Township. And the existing easement serves 110 Thorpe Lane, which is owned by Alfred Frady Jr., and also serves an unaddressed parcel which has an unoccupied mobile home owned by Addie Pearl Franklin. This overall property was originally an exempt subdivision. At the time, it was divided from the estate of Mildred B. Nobles. It was divided among children and named grandchildren, which made it an exception to the subdivision ordinance. According to the deed, the property at 110 Thorpe Lane was intended to be served by the easement, which is marked easement A on the attached property maps, which is the easement that the applicant is requesting a name for. However, the owner of 110 Thorpe Lane has not been using that easement A that was intended on the deed. He's been using a different easement which runs through the property that contains the applicant's primary residence. The applicant, Mr. Thorpe, understands that this is a legal issue that the county cannot enforce. He is requesting a name for easement A so that he can get a street sign put up because he feels this would help make it clear that this is the intended point of ingress and egress for the property at 110 Thorpe Lane. The residence at 110 Thorpe Lane is the only occupied residence served by easement A. There is also an unoccupied mobile home on the property owned by Addie Pearl Franklin, which is served by easement A. The residents who signed the petition to name a private road included the applicant and two residents who own property that is part of this exempt subdivision, but they are not served by easement A. According to the applicant, Addie Frank, sorry, Albert Frady Jr. and Addie Pearl Franklin, who are served by easement A, would refuse to sign the petition to name a private road. So for consistency with your ordinance, the addressing ordinance has private road naming guidelines, which state that the petition must indicate the number of property owners on the private road in question, and that a majority of the property owners must be in agreement with this proposal. In this case, there are three property owners on the private road in question. Only one of those property owners, the applicant, has signed the petition. The other people who signed the petition are property owners within that subdivision, but not located on the private road in question. Recommendation, the planning board unanimously recommended denial of the road name because the request is not consistent with the private road naming guidelines outlined in the addressing ordinance, which state that a majority of the property owners on the private road in question must be in agreement with the proposal. The attachments I've included are the petition that was submitted. You can see the three proposed road names there and the people that signed it. The next page shows the properties that are owned by the applicant. And I apologize if the copy is a little dark, but you should be able to see easement A marked on the easement that is the furthest north. And then the next attachment shows the property that they're concerned with, that is supposed to be served by easement A, but they're using that easement that is marked as Thorpe Lane The next property map is, shows the unoccupied mobile home that is also served by easement A. And then finally, here's the, the last property map shows the other two people who signed the petition. As you can see, they are located in that subdivision, but they are not served by easement A. It doesn't connect to their properties at all. And then finally, just a copy of that page from your addressing ordinance with the private road naming guidelines. And I've highlighted for you number three, that the petition must indicate the number of property owners on the private road in question, and that a majority of the property owners must be in agreement with the proposal. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Jamie? We need a motion to...
Motion to move?
Motion to what?
Motion to take the road...
Recommendation of the planning board to take the recommendation of the planning board.
Recommendation of the planning board is to deny it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other question? Not all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Item number three is Blackbeard 300 Celebration Request for Funds. Jason Payer. Jason?
And I see you've got a heavy hitter with you, too. Commissioners, town officials, county officials, how are y'all doing? It's great to see y'all again. I'm Jason Payer, president of the Greater Bath Foundation, and appreciate y'all's time to allow me to come speak again. We've got a great event coming up this October for the 300th tricentennial of Blackbeard, and it's really going pretty well. You know, we're getting a lot of vendors, a lot of applications. This is going to be a one-year deal, but it's going to be a full family, a family-friendly event. Start at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, go all the way to nine. We've got, right now, two bands planned, we've got three pirate ships, and a cannon company coming, and we've got some new vendors coming from Charleston, South Carolina, and Florida. So it's really been a really, a really good thing. You know, we start off this year with our Memorial Day celebration, as we have every year, and we had over 5,000 people come to the event, and we had the embers, and it was a real good thing. We're really trying to, you know, raise as much money as we can for the, you know, town of Bath. It really needs it, we're able to help them with their sewer system. But Bath still needs a lot more, too, you know, with their water treatment plant, and curbs and gutters, and mapping systems. So we're constantly trying to do all we can to try to, you know, help raise awareness for the town as a arm, you know, fundraising arm for the town of Bath. So when I had come earlier this year, you know, I wanted to really, you know, talk about is in years past, the county has been a really good sponsor for our event, and, you know, it was my request this year to see if the county and the commissioners entertain a $5,000 donation for the event to go towards this wonderful event that's going to happen. You know, Channel 9 is going to be our major media sponsor. We've got a lot of things lined up with them, with, also with our digital media coverage going in three states. So it's not just for Bath, it's actually for Beaufort County. There's other things that are going to be going on in Beaufort County that day, too, and how we're kind of gearing this deal is not just for Bath, is that come to Beaufort County and spend the day. There's a lot, there's, I think, one or two other things going on that would give a lot of people, it's going to be good economic development, but also bring the people in to know what's going on. So that's what I wanted to come talk about.
Any questions of Jason?
I guess the museum will be open.
The museum will be open, full-time. We'll have, we're trying to work right now with cultural resources to be able to have some reenactors coming in. We've got over 40 reenactors coming in from Florida to North Carolina. We've got a cannon company that's bringing about eight cannons, where with the pirate ships, we're actually going to recreate a real sea battle. And we're not talking about the small ones like used at the ECU games. We're talking, that's about a half a pound. This is like a two, three-pound cannon. So we're having them lined up, and the ships are going to be PAM mikes, the people are going to be swinging on the ships, and it's going to be really a good thing. I mean, nothing else like it. So do it, do it right.
You got Chris and Carney squirming.
Target, cannon son.
Yep.
We have, we have a large insurance policy, I can promise you that.
Mr. Evans?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the $5,000 to the town of Bath for the 300-year anniversary of Blackbeard.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, where would this money come from within our budget?
It's proposed to come out of contingency. You have a budget amendment that would...
Do we have a line item in there that has to do with tourism or something?
You do. There's a line item in there, it's $15,000 that's set aside for tourism, in $1,000 increments for organizations to request that funding.
Why don't we just take $5,000 out of that fund, and then you don't have to go into fund balance?
You're not going into fund balance, you're going into contingency.
Well, then you don't have to go into contingency.
Okay.
I mean, that's already budgeted money.
All right. Any other comment?
Would you amend your motion to say that the $5,000 is to come out of the tourism budget?
Whatever the county manager recommends. We put it as contingency simply because you've got that existing. But, I mean, we can certainly amend the, amend the budget amendment if you'd rather it come out of there. It would just decrease out of that one.
Because don't we also, the different towns that want to do fireworks, isn't that what we normally use the tour? I would hate to clean that out, and we can, we can take it from contingency. I would prefer to do it that way.
Well, right now, the manager has the authority on that $15,000 to spend it however he wants to at $1,000 a pop. So, I mean, I don't mind him spending it however he wants to, because that's fine with me. But you can always go to contingency. Why don't we not take it out of fund balance and take it out of something that's already budgeted that's laying there?
I'm assuming we've already had a request, and we've already moved some money out of that.
No, I haven't had any requests this year. And there are some guidelines to, thanks to Commissioner Richardson, but there are some guidelines in which we go by and which that money is expended. So it's not free rein. But if you took it out of there, you'd only have $10,000 left in that, and that is the funds. Because you remember, two years ago, the board set that up to say, we're going to spend it, and it's going to be a $1,000 increments, you could get up to $2,000 a year, once every six months, and that's for any organization who's promoting tourism in the county.
So that's why you took it out of contingency, because we set a limit on that?
That's right. We moved it to contingency simply because of that. We're not going to fund balance. You've got 25 in contingency. There's 25 in contingency. But it's at the board's pleasure, whatever you want.
So wouldn't we have to change the policy on the other one, then?
No, you just direct us to take it out of there, and we do that, and you have $10,000 left in there.
Well, you've heard the recommendation. All those in favor of the motion?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. What are we actually doing? Because I sit here through this stuff over and over, and you guys talk back and forth, and when we finish, nobody knows what we're doing. Where is this money coming from?
Out of the contingency fund.
You're bringing it out of the contingency fund. I'm not going to vote for it if it comes out of the contingency fund. It shouldn't come out of contingency. It should come out of something that's already budgeted. I'm for them, I think they need the money. It's going to pass anyway, my vote's not going to matter.
Did you, did you, did you state our policy would not allow us to do more than $1,000 out of that?
That's correct.
No, that's not what our policy is. Our policy says the manager has the authority to spend not more than $1,000 on each application without coming back to the commissioners. That's what the policy says.
I think if we put a limitation on it, no more than two.
We didn't put a limitation on it. We gave the manager the authority to spend the money. We are the board, we can change it to however we want. We can change it to however we want to. But you guys are intent on increasing the amount, the budget and the amount of money that we're spending. Why don't we take money that we've already appropriated, save the taxpayers a little bit of money on this deal?
Right, you might want something, but I-
No, just, I want the board to be clear, the funds are appropriated. There is a contingency line item in the budget, so it is appropriated.
That's right.
So, you're not, you are not going to fund balance on this. You are not taking money out of fund balance on this. No matter what you do, you are not taking money out of fund balance on this.
Well, what's gonna happen, you know, I can tell you exactly what's gonna happen. It's the same thing that happened when I made the motion to buy the palm trees. I was cleaning out that account. And you're gonna have somebody come in here with something that you really don't want to approve, and they're gonna want the money, and you're gonna be sitting here saying, you've got the money. You, you, the money is there, go ahead and appropriate what's already budgeted. It's just good business. But I'm tired of beating on this dead horse, so I'm, I'm gonna be quiet.
Thank you.
So, where is the money coming from? The last word.
The recommendation in the, I lie, in the agenda item is contingency. It's up to the board. Where do you wanna take it from?
Well, I won't vote for it if it comes out of contingency. It needs to come out of what you've already appropriated.
The motion was for contingency?
Right.
Okay.
I second that.
In the second hand, okay. All right. No more discussion? All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you, Jason.
Commissioners, thank y'all very much. Hope y'all can come.
Was there anything you wanted to say?
I think you did a funny job.
Well, I hope everybody can come.
Thank you. Okay, item number four is legal services contract. Wynn?
Good evening, Commissioner. Just want to take a few minutes of your time. I'd like to request permission to allow the contract with the key is legal service to automatically extend for two years. I attached a copy of the contract with my request, and it basically says that by October 1st, if we haven't made a comment and he's not replied to us, the contract will automatically roll over. The original contract was done in 2012, which means the fees that were being charged right now for 2012, not 2018. So, that is, my recommendation is that we allow this to be rolled over.
Any, any questions of, uh, Wynn?
Motion to approve?
Got a motion to approve the two-year extension of the contract. Second?
Second.
Motion's been second. Any other comment? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the extension, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wynn. All right, item number five is 2017 Local Water Supply Plan Update. Eric? And Christina?
Good evening. A local water supply plan is an assessment of a water system's current and future water needs and its ability to meet those needs. North Carolina General Statute GS 143-355I requires that all units of local government that provide, or plan to provide public water service, to prepare a local water supply plan. North Carolina Administrative Code 15A NCAC 02E 0.0600 also requires systems subject to GS 143-355I to electronically submit an annual water use update based on their water use and system conditions by April 1st of every year for the period of January 1st to December 31st of the prior year. Beaufort County Water Department has received notification from NC DEQ Division of Water Resources that our submitted 2017 local water supply update for the north side system and south side system meets the criteria. Both updates must now be adopted by resolution.
Any questions of Eric or Christina?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On page 205, where you, the Beaufort County north side and the south side, the same question is asked, and that is, has any, let me get my glasses on. Has water pressure been inadequate in any part of the system since the last update? And the answer is yes. So, what part of the system is the water pressure inadequate in?
Uh, that happens when we have a water main break, or if an hydrant gets hit, or if by some reason that the pressure in a particular area drops below 30 PSI. We issue system pressure devices to the affected customers, and because of that, during that one small episode, that portion of the system has been affected.
Well, you know, my question is, uh, does this question go to design, or is it, does it go to emergencies? Because every water system has to answer yes, if you're gonna answer it that way. I would take it as being, I would take it as being a question that goes to design. So, we don't have any design inadequacies insofar as pressure goes in our water system.
Overall, that's correct.
Right. Well, I just think, I wouldn't have answered it that way. I, you know, 'cause you're sticking your head in a noose when you say your pressure was inadequate, 'cause they can come back to you and say, okay, pressure was inadequate, now you gotta spend some money. I think the right answer is no, because you, and then after that, you can say, no design deficiencies in pressure. That's the, I, I think that's the proper way that should be, should be answered. The other, the other thing, uh, is, are there any questions, are any answers within this that are gonna require us to spend money during the coming, until we do another water supply plan?
No, the, the, the intent of this is that everything has to be answered every year. So, it gets looked at every year. So, the way that this is set up is all the questions that we've answered on this doesn't require us to spend any money, because the plan is saying that we are adequately supplied. Now, if we get in a situation where we're using way more water than we have access to, then it will require, the state will look at it and say, you're using more water than you can get. You need to come and have a plan on what are you gonna do about that? Do you need to drill more wells? Do you need to negotiate a contract to buy more water?
Right. But there's nothing in here, in these answers, that requires us to spend money.
No.
Okay. Any, anybody else? All right.
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor of the motion or the resolution, raise your right hand. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item number six, the Award of Project Management Contract. Christina?
Good evening, Commissioners. Since April 2017, MeterSys has worked with Beaufort County to evaluate our current processes and our metering needs. During the June 4th, 2018 Commission, Board of Commissioners meeting, approval was given to contract with Ferguson Enterprises to prevent, to provide a census-brand AMI system for the Beaufort County water system. Presented before you tonight is a recommendation to contract, to continue contracting with MeterSys to provide project management services during the implementation of this project. Staff understands that it is a large project and understands the commitment that, that will be required monetarily, and we won't, would like to ensure the success of this project. And we feel that contracting with MeterSys will give us, um, higher likelihood of success and ensure that that happens. MeterSys is obviously very familiar with our systems. They have worked with other municipalities and other county systems installing, um, actual a Ferguson census metering system. They also are familiar with Logix, which is our billing software, and they've worked with other municipalities during that integration process. So, our recommendation is to contract with MeterSys in the amount of 237,985,000 to provide project management services.
Got a motion to approve the management contract. Second?
Comment?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not gonna vote for this, and the reason I'm not gonna vote for this, and I'm also not gonna vote for the financing that's coming up on this, is any time a business, and our water system is run as a business, it's called an enterprise, which is a business, any time that you spend money out of a business, that you don't get a return on that investment, you are by definition increasing your cost. And when you increase your cost, who pays for it? Your customers pay for it. So, this, this can be parroted any way they want to say it, but at the end of the day, this is an increased cost showing only a $200,000 a year benefit, which is, is non-existent insofar as justifying a project. It'll take 24 years to get your money back out of this thing using their numbers. So, there is no return on this particular investment, and I can't vote for it, and I can't support it. The whole project needs to be redone, reevaluated, and looked at from the standpoint of piecemealing or whatever you have to do in order to get a return on investment, because there is not an advantage to Beaufort County or the citizens of Beaufort County to spend this $4.7 million. There is simply no advantage.
Anybody else with a question? If not, we'll entertain the, uh, the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I get to vote against it while you're doing that vote. Now, don't, don't forget-
All those opposed, I apologize.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to item number seven, letter of support to bring fuel to downtown Washington waterfront. Martin?
Good evening again. I'm coming for you to ask for a letter of support for Haven's Wharf Marina Fuel Dock Project under the North Carolina Boating Infrastructure Grant Program, which should be awarded in 2019. The Wharf project is for a fuel dock. There is currently no public access to boat fuel in the Washington area, and this project would offer fuel for deep-water access to transient boaters that travel down the intercoastal waterway that typically don't come to Washington, because there's no fuel in this area, and they may get, may get stuck here. The proposed project includes the installation of a new fuel tanks and dispensers, a floating dock designated for fueling only, a building that's actually not included in the grant, but is there for convenience of the boaters, which should be bathrooms, showers, a storefront to house the fueling operation, and then repurposing of six of the 22 existing Haven Wharf boat slips from long-term to short-term rentals, so, for use by transient boats. So, the quest is for, write a letter of support, direct staff to write a letter of support for the Haven's Wharf Marine Fuel Dock Project.
So moved.
Yes. Commissioner Brenn?
I think it's a good project. I've just got a couple of questions about it.
Sure.
Has it been designed so we can collect any spills if we were to have one?
I assume I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm-
Okay.
Go ahead.
Where are the fuel tanks gonna be located? Are they gonna be above ground or below ground?
I believe they'll be above ground, but again, I'll find-
And where are they gonna be located?
I don't have the exact plan for it at this time. I assume they'll be above ground.
I can answer Commissioner Brenn's question.
Thank you.
There's a federal program, part of it's overseen by the Coast Guard, and I can't think of the correct name for it, but I've done permits for it. And the fuel situation will have to be designed to be in conformity to that federal program. There's a bunch of paperwork that goes with it, and a bunch of designs, and it has to be done by an engineer. So, yes, the fuel situation is gonna be a safe situation when it's, when it's over with.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Bead?
I mean, since this is, I mean, I, I think it's a great project in Blackbeard, but what, what is the position of the city of Washington?
Uh, they're for it, yes. They've already written their letter of support.
Well, I make a motion that we will write a letter of support.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
Did you call for a motion?
I thought we'd, have we already called for the motion?
No.
Okay.
We have a motion, we're second. We don't want to debate.
All right.
I want to ask Councilman, uh, who's here. Above ground, the tanks?
As far as I know, yes. And that conforms with-
The tanks would be probably double-wall above ground with, with a moat around them and a-
Yeah. And those things are already very well specified. There's no, no parity, no specification.
Thank you.
And, and based on what was in our material here, uh, the monies, or, or part of the grant money's coming from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and it's administered by the North Carolina Marine Fisheries. Any other comments? All right, we got a motion. All those in favor of, uh, writing a letter of support, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
You on a roll, Martin?
Okay, down to item number eight, apology to DSS Commissioner Richardson.
Oh, okay, item number eight. At the commission, to give you the background on this, page 231. At the last commissioner's meeting, there was a brouhaha that ensued, brouhaha that ensued, in which allegations were made that I had been covering, covering up stealing in the Department of Social Services. It's not true. Not true at all. None of it. And it disparaged the Department of Social Services employees. They deserve an apology for reckless, reckless allegations that were made at that particular meeting. And, uh, am I on the right page here? Yes, apology to DSS. Beaufort County Board of Commissioners extends to the board a motion. The Beaufort County Board of Commissioners extends to the Board of Social Services, the director and the entire staff, our apology for disparaging statements made at the 2018 board meeting relating to money handling within the Department of Social Services. So moved.
Is there a second to the motion? If not, it dies.
Well, that was kinda quick, Mr. Chairman, because, you know, allegations were made by this board that were irresponsible and reckless, and they were aimed toward me as covering it up. Now, you guys don't want to apologize to the, to the employees of the Board of Social Services, then you'll have to take whatever you get out of this. But you need to understand, when you start making allegations about people and, and of this serious, you need to be prepared to take the heat from, heat from it.
Well, I'll tell you something. You need to apologize to every one of those people sitting right over there. The way you've disparaged those people over the years, you need to apologize to them and apologize to them right now.
There's, those are our employees. They're just like an employee of anybody else.
People that way.
Well, that's your opinion.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
Which isn't worth two cents.
Gentlemen.
I think so.
We're, we're, we're gonna move right on. Item number nine, ratify or reject the signing of House Bill 630 Session Law, 2017-14, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, at the last meeting, and I'm gonna say some more bad things about our employees, uh, the chairman signed a co, you call it a memorandum of understanding, but it's a contract, same thing, you agreed to do something. That must be a contract. Signed a memorandum of understanding with no notice to the board involving the Department of Social Services. And we would've taken, I at least, would've taken a strong position in defense of the county and the county's money, uh, had we had an opportunity to do so. And the excuse that was used was, there was no time, we had to do it, you know? Well, if you have to do it, why are you doing it all? It must be a law, in which case you don't need to sign anything. So, why do people need you to sign stuff? They make you sign stuff you're not supposed to sign. There's some laws against that. So, what we need to do here is, and here's what my motion is, moved unless the Beaufort County manager had prior approval from the chairman of the board to sign the memorandum of understanding for House Bill 630/Session Law, uh, 2017-41, and the Medicaid, and the Medicaid, and the North, and the NC Health Choice Recoupment Plan, in advance of the signing, the board by vote either ratify or reject the manager's signature of the documents and an appropriate report of the action of the board be made to the proper authorities. Because we've had prob, I've been here 22 years. I didn't just get here, yes. Because we've had problems, I've been here 22 years, I didn't just get here yesterday. The game that was played for years and years and years involving the Health Department was, oh, we have to do it, we have to do it, it's the law, we agreed to do it. And I kept saying, when did I agree to do this? And what was going on was, the, the annual management plan was slipped in the back door, was signed by the chairman, it never came before the board. Now, we've had problems with this on this board before, with people signing things that did not come before the board. This particular item involves Medicaid. We, at that same meeting, we approved $6,000 for an audit, that if we hadn't agreed for the audit, we wouldn't have had to approve. So, it started costing you money from the very minute that this thing came before the board. The public expects their business to be run a little better than this, and it's, the public expects their business to be defended better by the county commissioners than what we're doing. We're not here to agree. If we're here to agree, you don't need us. You get rid of all of us. It's going to work like, like some people want it to work. So, I think we need to either affirm what the manager did by vote, that's my motion, or we need to disaffirm what the manager did by vote, unless he had prior approval from the chairman of the board.
Well, I'll, I'll respond to that comment. The chairman of the board was not, I did not give him the authority to do it.
Did he talk to you about it?
No.
He went and did it on his own?
Well, he has the authority to do it.
No, he doesn't.
It's a memorandum of understanding?
No, he does not have the authority to sign an agreement that could cost us millions of dollars, change the way social services works from a policy standpoint. Now, you guys can believe all of that, you want to believe, but you have a bigger responsibility than that. The manager does not have that authority.
Did, did we approve, did we ratify that at the last meeting?
You didn't vote on it.
You had discussions about it. It's a state law that we're required to sign it.
Well, that's an oxymoron. There is no state law that you're required to sign anything, why do you have to sign it? It's a state law that forces it down your throat.
The memorandum of understanding was done by the legal staff at the state level.
And we were told.
And they inserted his name as county manager.
Does, do the people of this county realize that by signing that, you now, you're having another level created of social services within the state of North Carolina at great expense to you, and you're losing a lot of your authority to manage the local Department of Social Services, which we've been doing for years and years and years? Everybody wants to run and hide from the reality of what's really going on with government. How do you think government got to be as sorry it is, is today? It's because of stuff like this. Thank God for Donald Trump.
Is there, did we get a second? Was there a second?
All we're hearing.
Then he must have had approval of the manager.
All we're having is fake news.
He must have had the approval of the manager, because that's what the motion says, unless he had approval. So, Mr. Manager, you did approve it.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, you did approve it.
We're going to, we're going to move to the next item unless the council, our attorney wants to say anything. If not, we'll move. All right? We'll go to item number 10, legislative goal, seek legislation to repeal or amend North Carolina General Statute 105-275, that currently excludes 80% of the appraised value of solar energy facilities. This is the time of the year where the North Carolina State Association of County Commissioners, during the next 30 or 60 days, determines goals that we want to move forward, and it's a long process. It goes from August all the way through January and February of next year. Each county is asked to submit a gold, or goals, and I, I'm assuming that over 100 maybe plus will go in, and they, they go to different committees for, like this one would go to, I guess, the taxation committee. So, there's no guarantee, but at the state level, they asked us to either do a resolution or a letter of support. And I recommend the resolution as follows. Resolution of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners requesting that North Carolina Association of County Commissioners legislative goals include repealing North Carolina General Statute 105-275, excluding 80% of the appraised value of solar energy facilities from ad valorem Whereas on January the 1st, 2016, the North Carolina law allowing a 35% tax credit on renewable energy production systems ended, and whereas the North Carolina General Statute 105-275 still allows the exclusion of 80% of the appraised value of solar energy facilities from local ad valorem tax valuation, and whereas a community hosting solar energy facilities should receive the full economic benefit of such development within its boundaries, particularly since solar energy facilities reduce open space and usable farmland, and therefore be resolved by the Beaufort County Board, Board of Commissioners, that Section 1, Beaufort County requests that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners legislative goals include legislation repealing North Carolina General Statute 105-275. Section 2, this resolution is effective upon its adoption. And I, I move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Questions, comments? All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we're down to item number 11, AMI financing contract. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next step in moving the AMI project forward is to secure the financing. So, on June the 19th, RFPs were issued to 10 local banks. Six banks responded with bids, and that bid tabulation can be found on page 257. As you can see on page 257, highlighted in yellow there, Bank of America was the low interest rate bidder at 3.3644%. So, tonight, we're recommending that you accept Bank of America's proposal to provide the $4.5 million installment financing at a fixed rate of 3.3644% to finance the AMI project, authorize the county manager to execute the contract, and adopt the budget amendment to make the debt service payments for this fiscal year. This action and any action you take related to this project tonight is contingent on LGC approval tomorrow at their meeting.
Motion to approve. Got a motion too. The financing package, second. Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Let me get my speech again.
All right.
The, this, this, for those of you that don't know, the AMI project is the water meter project. So, four and a half million dollars return that they will admit to is $200,000 a year. So, divide 200,000 into four and a half million, and how long does it take to pay this thing back? Two divided by 45 is what? A lot of years to get your money back out of this thing. So, there's no return on this investment. I'm going to say the same thing again, this is something that, you know, we don't think about enough, but is a basic common sense. If you're running a business, and the water system is a business because the people that use the water pay the expenses of running that business, and if you spend money and you don't get a return on your investment, that is something back for the money you've spent, then it becomes an expense by definition. So, the four and a half million dollars is there, it's going to come at the water users sooner or later. It's about $300 a year per water user, so 12 into 300. You know, you're talking about some pretty significant things that are going to hit you. The other thing that I will say about this project from my looking at it, it's not going to work like you think it's going to work, because you've got to have some, you're, you're only reducing payroll by like two people. You're going to keep all these same people there. None of these people are computer literate. You have to be computer literate, you have to have some pretty good skills in order to be able to do this. So, the next thing that's going to be coming at you is, well, we got to keep the whole staff we got, but now we got to go out and hire some people and train some people to run this system, because they don't know how to run it. So, just be prepared for expenses to go up. I am not going to vote for this. This is not a business deal. No businessman on the face of the earth, government, yes, government, they love things like this, because it doesn't make sense. No businessman on the face of the earth is going to approve this project, so I'm not voting for it.
Well, we're looking at an investment that, that I think the life expectancy was 15 to 20 years?
Twenty years.
And we're looking at a loan proposal that's set up for 15 years. The other thing that's not being said by Commissioner Richardson is our, our meters are almost obsolete that we have now, and if we had to totally replace that, that would be 1.8 million. We've had, you know, we've had the study done, and we've had all the comments, and it's the same song and dance every time that we go through this process. If there was no saving, if there was zero savings, it would, it would mean that your water bill was, go up. But, there is some potential savings. The problem is, it's hard to, it's not an exact size, is it? When you start trying to nail that down. So, we understand Commissioner Richardson is going to vote no one in, and that's not a surprise, but he's not going to hold up progress in this county. We're going to, we're going to go through with it. Hopefully, we'll have the support, so. Anybody else have anything to say?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to refute what you just said.
You, you've had your time.
No, Mr. Chairman, what you just said is not true.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
What you said is not true.
Okay.
You have lied to the public.
Like you've never lied to the public.
Number one statement you made is you're going to spend four and a half million dollars and to the end of 50 years, you've got nothing left.
You're, you're, you're just out of order.
It's a useless project. Now, stay out of order on this project.
You're out of order.
You keep, keep me out of order on this project.
You're out of order.
Because what you just did is dishonest.
Would you just keep your mouth shut?
Oh, you're telling me to shut up? You're going to shut me up?
You're out of order.
Why don't you shut me up?
You're out of order.
Why don't you shut me up?
Okay, we're going to move down to item number 12. Beaufort County Comprehensive Bicycle Plan.
I have a right to speak at this meeting.
Ryan.
Not to be shut down.
You've had your, you've had your rights.
The public deserves the truth.
Yeah.
And that's the truth.
Ryan, see if you can get to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're aware, the county was awarded from the North Carolina Department of Transportation a grant for a comprehensive bicycle plan.
Mr. Manager, I know it's a lot of hard air in here, but could you speak a little louder?
Yes. I'm sorry. As you're aware, the county was awarded from the North Carolina Department of Transportation a grant for a comprehensive bicycle plan. That bicycle plan would look at the county and, and put that piece in place, because the DOT requires that to be in place when you look for grant funding for other opportunities. They have a template, our RFP, that we received from DOT, it was put out, we received one, one proposal the first time, so we sent it out again. On that second time, we received two, you'll see both of those listed, one was the Mideast Commission at $45,000, the other was the Alta Planning and Design at $68,000, and we'd recommend that you approve the Mideast Commission in the amount of $45,000 underneath that grant.
Motion to approve. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any, any questions? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, item number 13 is the budget amendment for the one-stop voting. Brian?
Yes, sir, and I apologize, I'm pinch hitting on this one. Kelly is not here, they're in some training. But, as you're aware, Session Law 2018-112, which was Senate Bill 325, which was signed into law on June 27th of 18, requires now that, that local boards of elections don't have the authority to change or customize their one-stop voting. It is now required that it be 18 days, and that they cannot abbreviate any of the schedules for, for one stop. The law requires that each satellite station have a minimum be open from 7:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday during the 18-day period, and from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the last Saturday. The board previously was allowed under law to change that and set it up in the best interest of, of the voters and in Beaufort County, and unfortunately, based on this law, it's going to cost us, according to Kelly's estimates, about an additional $30,000 to implement that. So, what you have is a budget amendment that would pull funds out of fund balance in the amount of $30,000 to be able to pay for that, that additional election expense.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any questions?
I'd like to say something here. This is, this is one of these bills that, that was done in the, in the wee hours of the night, and county's going to have to pay for it. But, this is one of them mandates that you get mandated to do something, and no money come with it. Now, our county is paying approximately $30,000, I think it's going to be a little bit more, I really do. 18 days at 12 hours a day. Just think about the burden that we have put on counties like Wake, Mecklenburg, Cumberland, by doing these great things in the heat of the night.
Any other comment?
Wasn't most of the early voting came out of lawsuits that the Democrats brought?
No, that was a Republican-controlled House and Senate that done this in the wee hours of the morning, Mr. Richardson.
But, as a result of lawsuits that Democrats brought.
Around who done it? Let's, let's.
Yeah, well, you need to be careful, you had to tell the whole story.
What, you, Hood, I try not to say this, but you don't want me to tell my whole story?
Oh, yeah, I do. I do. Oh, yes, I do.
Okay, getting back to.
I call it a question.
All right.
My own question.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor.